Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of November twenty first two thousand seventeen. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like we have a form. Do we have to appoint any alternates this evening?
You don't have any alternates.
We're awful, okay. Then I will ask for the roll call members present. Michael Proto, Vice Chair.
Joe Bonchett, Member.
Kimberly Queen, Clerk.
Tyler Perrin, Member.
David Samuel, Member.
Kurt Schaefer, Selective.
All right, and welcome to our meeting. Okay, everyone's here. We'll first start off this evening with public input. Is there any members of the public that wish to be heard at this time? I see none, I'm gonna close public input. First item on the agenda for this evening is the Community Design Subcommittee. Anybody had an opportunity to take a look at what we have been doing so far?
Yeah, I'm just gonna distribute a couple things here. Item one, and while you're here, I'll give you item two. Ooh, that worked out just right.
Page one.
All right.
I guess Jen, you can start us off with the conversation.
Okay. I think I promised at the first meeting that I would get something updated and online, so that we could have a place that I would post everything that we do as we progress along. And that's finally here, and I'm kind of hitting other items thing for the end of the agenda. This is, if you remember, your Downloads page, where we post things for public meetings and everything. This has all been cleaned up. And so we've now split, so kind of tying the other business to what we're here tonight. I know one of the things we've been looking at are the visioning materials that we did in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. That's been split from the Downloads page, so visioning now has its own separate page with those materials archived on the site, so if you go looking for them, they have their own page now. The Downloads page, the URL is the same as what it was before, it's still the Downloads URL. However, the title at the top is now Draft Planning Documents, which is more appropriately what's been posted here and what the link is on the Planning Board's homepage on the official town website. If you recall back, this is the Google site, the forward-facing Google site that was created by John Brunel and Jason Hoak back in two thousand twelve, when we started the whole community planning, visioning, future land use process. So, that's been kind of cleaned up and updated. And as part of that, I've added a separate page just for this process here, for the Community Design Master Plan. It just has a really short synopsis of what we're doing and where the adopted master plan chapters are, and a link right to that visioning page that's right next to it on the tabs. And what I've started doing is, you know, at the bottom you'll see these meeting materials. There's a page for each meeting. I've gone backwards, so there's a September nineteenth. It's just typed-up meeting notes, all of those bullets that I typed during that meeting and the handout that I had at that time. Similar for last month, it is the typed-up meeting notes, as well as the PDF of the PowerPoint. And so then we come to tonight. And I've actually printed and passed out for you what is on tonight's page, because, you know, I know we kind of painfully slogged through the first twenty-five pages of images at the last meeting. And to try and kind of help focus us, I've put together some bullets, which is what I just passed around. And I know it's a very long list of bullets, but I think if we can kind of just really kind of, as we look through the images tonight, quickly hit on what of these items are relevant on each of those bullets, it will help us kind of make the conversation as we look at the images, hopefully a little bit more productive and hopefully expedited a little, so we can get through all of the images. I do want to get to everybody's images that they submitted for this process. So again, it's, you know, a bunch of general things, such as what do you like, what do you dislike? Where do, you know, and I'm gonna try and gauge while you do that where we have consensus and where we may need more public input. And if there's missing images, you know, shout it out and be like, you know what? This is missing from what we've got up here on the screen. Then we also want to try and nail down what specifically is it about these buildings that we've taken pictures of? Or these sites or different features in the community that we've taken pictures of? So looking at building characteristics, and that's where you've got like, I've thrown out there like a complete brainstorming list of what those building characteristics might be. Same with the streets and parking, again, brainstorming list of what those characteristics might be that you're seeing that resonate, and same with landscaping and open space. The other thing I'd like you to kind of think about as we go through this is where does this apply? And we spent a lot of time on residential last meeting, and that's something that would kind of generally apply across the town, but that's a large percentage of the town area. But when we start looking at more specific building types, is it something that would only apply to, say, the Northern Commercial District? Or would it apply to all the commercial districts? Or is it something that might be, you know, that specific objective in the future land use section of the master plan, where we say that we want to create a new, you know, town center right out here at the intersection with Albuquerque? This is what I'm specifically imagining for this specific location. So try and keep that in mind and shout that out as we go through. So if it's, you know, this is everywhere or it's in this specific location. Part of what we want to be able to do is to take the work that was in the future land use chapter to the next step and say, this is what we generally had envisioned for the community. This is how we see it happening in the future and what we see it looking like in the future. So we want to kind of start to pair and marry those two pieces together. Okay, so with that.
Jen, can I just interject?
Yes, sir.
I want to go back to the last meeting we had. We were actually reviewing a commercial warehouse. And one of the interesting things that, I was on the phone, but I'd read all the documentation, seen the plans. One of the interesting things that I found myself being remote, feeling as I was going through the plans and I was listening to the conversation, what I saw was something that I didn't like. And it's really, it would really be an interesting contextual thing as we go through these pictures as well, to think about what you don't like here. Because, you know, if there's something that strikes you as, I really don't like the look and feel of that, I think it's important to call that out, because you can go, you can take something you didn't like and turn it into something that you would like more. A statement for the chapter that you would like more as well. So I just wanted to interject that, because it was, you know, experiencing that remotely just the last meeting.
Yeah.
It was an interesting finding for me.
Kind of makes it real as to why we're here, working on this particular.
It really did, and it made me think of this, yeah.
Okay, so with that, gazebos. So what is it about gazebos that kind of resonates here? Is this something that we see that just is more of a general feeling of community that a gazebo represents versus something that we would like to see at different locations as a meeting point?
I'm the one that got those pictures, and I was thinking about the idea of a town park, a public park down across from the church.
Okay.
From the Presbyterian Church and the Fire Station and Historical Society in that area on the riverside. Thought it would be pretty to have a gazebo that could be decorated for the different, you know, for Memorial Day and then again at Christmas with a tree and lights. They have one down in Hudson and that little pond, and it's very pretty. That's what I was thinking of it for.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Anyone else want to kind of add to that?
Well, if it's large enough, you could have concerts or little mini concerts.
Yes.
So people could come out in the summer. And that would enhance the town park.
Like at the Milford Oval, where they have a gazebo, concerts in the summer.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Sounds great.
Now, I know we have one out here, I believe.
Right.
We got a couple small ones.
And I know that that was put together a couple of years ago. I don't know if I recall. It's a little bit small, but I know that they, people do use it, I imagine.
Same with one of the high schools.
Yeah.
It was actually a leftover dream from the two seventy-fifth celebration of Litchfield's birthday. And the committee that raised the funds for that had a considerable amount left over, I think in the neighborhood of eight thousand, that we didn't spend on the event. And we had hoped, those of us on that committee, that that would be put toward a fairly good-sized gazebo that could be used for concerts.
Okay.
Or plays or whatever.
Yeah.
All right.
Good to move forward.
Everyone good?
All right, signs. I'm gonna actually go through a couple of these here. And just kind of do three different images here. They're on three separate slides. In retrospect, they should have probably been together on one slide, but I want to just, I'm gonna zip through the three and then let's have a conversation. We can toggle back and forth between them. So we've got this, you know, one historic, Historic Village of Mount Vernon sign, town line, and another for Riverside Park in Raymond.
Jen, just so you know, I guess we're having a sign made for Litchfield?
Yeah, we're already in the process of making a.
Okay.
Pat Jewitt donated the money to have a Welcome to Litchfield sign made.
Oh.
Either end of town.
Just one, well, it's, they're three thousand dollars each, so she's covering one. And we're doing the South Side of Litchfield first, hopefully at some point in time.
Wouldn't be a great landmark risk.
Yes, yep. And hopefully we can get the North Side of Litchfield on three eight, when we raise the funds for it.
Is there a design document out there that's available?
I can show it to you, I don't know.
That's nice.
Along the same idea of the signs, well, you know, the flags that have recently been put up in the center kind of part of town, you know, stretching from like the library to the school, I think. You know, you'll go in a lot of small towns and you see just those banner-like flags that are just rectangular and, you know, and they might highlight different things throughout the town. Those are kind of nice, too. You know, like it could highlight all the features that we have, like the agriculture, the, you know.
Okay.
I really liked the design of that, a sign on the screen.
This one here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. More so than the other two? Yes, okay.
So going with the theme of don't like. Don't like the typical.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with either. Right.
Yeah, I'm not a fan.
Okay.
I am working very hard to find, to make an attachment and send it to all of you right now.
Oh, great.
The one that we do have in design right now.
Kind of like this?
Okay, if, yeah, if you get it, if the email sends, just give me a heads up, because I can then,
Throw it up there.
I can toggle to my email and pop it up on the screen as well. Not everyone has their laptops. Okay, so are we good on signs or are there other things we want to say about signs or?
I mean, I feel that it's important to think about design when designing signs, because otherwise people get sign fatigue and feel sign pollution is an issue. And that's what you want to avoid, because signs give obviously useful information. And it's important to think about design in particular when dealing with signs, so that people don't feel that there's too much sign pollution as it were. You want to give as much information as possible without feeling that every sign is the same.
That's why I like that particular style.
Absolutely, I agree.
And we're in one vein here of your typical flat, single-sided or double-sided sign. We haven't even touched on, say for instance, the big bold neon, the open sign that flashes at night.
Yep.
Yes.
I will go down on record as saying don't like for our city necessarily. I'm not, I'm not a big.
Not flashing signs aren't allowed under your sign ordinance.
Yeah, it's already taken care of.
I'm still a fan of not liking.
That's fine.
Twice as much.
We appreciate that.
Double up on that.
They're, you know, the flashing signs are just dangerous.
You should get it now, I think I said.
Oh, okay. So. Filtered looking for Joan. As you all get to see my, oh, I don't have it yet, though.
Set it to Planning Board NH, Litchfield NH.
You do Jen C at Nashwa RPC dot org?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I got it.
You have it?
Got it over there?
Everyone in the community.
Oh, because you're not on the Planning Board, are you not on the Planning Board email?
I should be.
I don't think so.
But not in, I think Joan adds me.
Jen C at what?
At Nashwa RPC dot org. And the Jens only got one in.
Good guess.
All right, so avoid flashing signs. Bright lights.
It becomes a little bit more tricky when you're talking about the business districts, Jen. Sign overload respectfully is an important point. However, for business, it's also an important point to draw people in.
Yep.
So where do we make that trade-off in terms of what we like and what we don't like? What's overbearing, what's not overbearing?
Okay.
Is there some type of distinction we want to make for signs as it relates to business district versus non-business district?
Well, I think our, I mean, I think our ordinance, or our sign ordinance basically tells us, you know, for a site review, what we basically require.
Yeah.
Especially if it's a business or something. I'm thinking of the place up here, is it DLB paving or whatever? They have a sign that's out there. And I know that there are certain requirements that have to be met. So, I mean, certainly we would be able to, you know, regulate that in the sense that, you know, we're not going to be looking for something that's going to be over the top or, you know, it's a neon sign or something like that.
Like the mortgage company? With the electronic board?
There you go.
So, so this is.
Yeah, set that up.
So this is a good thing that we, what we can do is a follow-up, so we have these conversations, we can kind of narrow things, but then we can have also these points where we are kind of trying to weigh like how much is too much. And so in that, I think one of the next steps that we can look at doing is doing, you know, what's called a visual preference survey. And so you can say, you know, and you can put like a, almost, you do like a gradient scale with pictures and you do like the one quaint little, you know, this one here, you know, the one quaint little sign versus you do, you know, South Willow Street. And you do a range of things in between them. And we know that no one's going to pick the South Willow Street. But, you know, you put it out there to kind of give you that range of what nice, light, few are, you know, historic signs is versus, you know, the sign pollution end of things. And you put it out there with, you know, a couple of different images, and you can put it, you know, send it out for the entire community to respond to. And it gives your businesses a chance to weigh in too, as well as residents. So you can get to hear from, you know, folks in town. You can even do it so that you ask, you know, are you a resident? Are you a business owner in Litchfield or both? And then you can cross-tab and you can get a feel for what businessers are saying they need versus what residents are willing to tolerate. And come up with, kind of try and find that happy medium and fine-tune things. So that's one of those next steps we can kind of, we can think about doing to further refine that visual image that we're looking for.
Plus, I mean, if you look at these, obviously, I mean, Vermont Vernon are historic, the historical district.
Right.
So you may have different types of, you know, you could maybe look at different ways of how to create a certain particular sign within the regulations or whatever. Obviously, I mean, if it's an historic district, then it's going to look something like that, I guess, or.
That's very similar to the Historical Society sign that's all along there.
Okay.
You have that email now, you should.
Okay. Yes, all right. Let's see, how do I make this full screen?
So which one are we getting the welcome to or the thank you for visiting?
Whichever way you're going in town.
Okay, there's a mistake on that, though.
What?
The town was not founded in seventeen thirty-four, it was incorporated in seventeen thirty-four. It had residents here for probably twenty years before that.
Heidi, that's your logo up there.
Yeah.
You designed for the town.
We've been using that for rec for a long time.
Town seal, yeah.
Yeah.
Designed it.
Heidi designed it when she was in school.
Oh, did you really?
Oh, yeah.
No, it's been, we've been using that for, you know.
Nineteen seventy-six.
When you were in college.
When I was in college, right, nineteen seventy-six.
We didn't know we hadn't gotten away from that.
Heidi, I always thought Claudette DeRosa designed it.
What's that?
I always thought Claudette DeRosa designed it. You did?
No, it was just a contest by the, from the Historical Society for submissions, and Heidi's won.
So I like the idea of a visual preference survey, particularly as it relates to the business areas of town.
And I probably think that's, you know, pretty important in terms of, you know, you know, the look and the feel of town and how, you know, people are going to, you know, sort of look at that. It's important.
All right, so let's keep rolling here. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna do similar here. I think we can go through, let's see, quite a few here all at a pop, because I must say, I got quite a few recreation, river access and open space images. So we're gonna, so I think if we kind of, if we went by the quantity of images that we received as a measure of what is most important to folks here around the table, this is the topic.
Open space.
The recreation, river access, open space, yeah. Just based on the sheer quantity of images. So I'm gonna kind of zip through. Your printout there, I think in the, that I did, I gave everyone a printout. You've got in the bottom right of each, you get two slides per page. Ignore the page number in the bottom right of the page. Each slide has its own slide number in it. So I'm gonna go from slide twenty-nine through, I don't know, let's see, how far we go.
Forty.
All right, so there. So we've got, we've got river access, we've got parkland with picnic areas, we've got skating on ponds. We've got, again, I'm thinking this is like the Deripond concept here or?
No, that was, that was my, the park at the river across from the church.
Okay. I'm gonna go quick and then we'll scoot back. Okay, park, so the River Park.
Yep.
Same thing?
Yeah.
General Park.
That's gonna be a big park.
River Park, River Park.
Same thing, yeah.
River Park, River Park, beach.
No money for schools next year.
So, okay, then we get to wildlife. So, yeah, so we go twenty-nine to forty. So, I guess, I guess, let me start with one question. Are we talking, is our focus really just on a river, riverfront park? Or is there additional spots that we want to think of or talk about?
Part of this came up because the town of Merrimack, in that same area, across from our church, library, Historical Society, going all the way down to below the school and our town park there, they are creating an enormous town park on their side of the Merrimack River. And it's going to go, part of it is going to be the town, then someone left land and money to do the rest of it below that. So it's going to be quite an extensive park. And so they were saying to us, wouldn't it be wonderful if Litchfield had a park across the river? And so we had this lovely little river scene of parks on both sides and so forth. I said, well, that would be interesting, since the town owns the land down there.
And also, it's the closest that the river is to Route three A. Through the whole length of town. So, you know, if it's all cleaned out there nicely, because there's a lot of, what's that vine? Bittersweet that's taken over the trees down there, made such a mess. I mean, you could drive along and see the river just driving by.
And years ago, you used to be able to do that.
Right.
Through a great deal of the town, as you were driving on the main road, you had to best serve the river. Because farmers used to keep those banks cut down, and all these vines hadn't started growing and so forth.
Okay.
It's just a nice spot, always have the Memorial Day services there.
And I also understand, and I don't know if I'm mistaken or not, in my understanding that at some point, the town and the Conservation Commission specifically might be interested in purchasing the bit of land that is owned by the church, right across from the church.
Okay.
And so then that would allow the park to run a good distance from north to south.
Because I think clearly, I mean, the Merrimack River is a big piece of this. I know that, you know, it's sort of, you know, it's identified as part of, you know, Litchfield's heritage and history and everything. And so I think, you know, I think that's a great idea in terms of, you know, fostering this notion that, you know, our relationship to the river is very important. You know, I don't think that should be overlooked.
The Recreation Commission likes the idea, too. John Bryant talked with me about it a lot after the first meeting that we had. I think, you know, they'd be very interested in taking part in all of it.
Does anyone have access point to the Merrimack plans?
The latest access plans?
There are park plans.
No, there's access plans. There's access plans, there's not park plans.
That was just spoken about, but nothing was put down on paper.
Okay. Okay, I can call.
And there were, down at that area, although you can't see them because it's so grown into. And there were, down at that area, although you can't see them because it's so grown into day, there were a number of historic things there. Of course, that's the site of the old Thornton's Ferry landing on our side of the river. And Thornton's Ferry used to come up and used to go up, what is today, three A, and go in Old Stage Road below the library. And that road went from Amherst to Exeter. And so that was the old stage road. Um, and that's why it's called Stage Road Crossing down there. Um, there are several intact, very lovely little brick foundations in there where little houses were on that site in the eighteenth, nineteenth centuries. Um, there are the foundations of the old horse sheds. Um, people who had pews in church also got a shed to keep their horse in while they were at church. And so all of those things could be, uh, brought back up and utilized as part of a historic site park.
Okay.
And also, across from the historical society, there's a little road, there's a sign, and a little road that goes off to the left. And those are the muster grounds on top of that hill that the state cleared out just a little while ago. And those are the only, that is the only intact muster ground in the state of New Hampshire. All the others have been built upon.
And a muster ground is?
Oh, where troops mustered for French and Indian Wars, Revolutionary War. They can't go through drills there and then get sent off to wherever they were going.
And that's the only remaining in the state?
That's the only one remaining in the state.
That's cool.
Yes, it is.
So just speak a little bit about what I personally gravitate to in these pictures. In thirty-three and thirty-four, I, I really like the sense of, um, open space for community. In these two pictures, um, there's, there's a clear theme to recreation perhaps, although there's only one or two with actual recreation going on in it. Um, this is, it's very clearly from a pictorial representation perspective that these are angled for open space more so than recreation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I like the, I like the theme in thirty-three and thirty-four, that these are places where people go to, to gather and to mix.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily just to be in nature.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and, and I, I like that theme because I, I feel like, um, and planning board has heard PCB's a million times, um, I feel like if there's no town center to where it is we are.
Right.
And, uh, the more, I mean, the, the more we can do to build community in that sense, I like it.
And I think one of the things we have to never forget, uh, from a planning board perspective of what the town should be is the great asset that we have at Deripond. Because that should be developed, that should be a town beach, so the people could go and use it and have a, cause we're never gonna have that on the river. You can have the river access, but the river's never gonna be clean. That is so full of PCBs and everything else that although you can swim in it and so forth, you can never eat fish from it, or you certainly wouldn't wanna bring your kids swimming there, but you could do that at Deripond.
So if, if, if I were to, so that's, you're, you're going actually in the, the direction I wanted to go is, is, so we, we talked a lot about the river, doing something along the riverfront. Um, and, and are there other locations in town in addition to the river that, that some of these images, uh, exemplify your vision of the future? So Deripond was one of the places I wanted to talk about. And the other one, um, you were talking, uh, David, you were talking about kind of community center. Is I know when we did the future land use exercise, we talked about, you know, this area out here at the, you know, right in front of town hall, be having that community centerpiece. So I wanna kind of touch on those two locations, if we could, um, and talk about, um, if any of these images from twenty-nine through forty exemplify what we envisioned for those two separate locations and what they might be.
Because isn't there a, a ultimate plan here, Jen, that one day there'll be a fire station here and the library will be up here? All those sorts of things if the money and interest is there? Isn't that the plan for this property, Jen?
Maybe not the library, but yeah, the fire station or safety complex.
Okay. I thought when we were sold this idea, this was gonna happen every time.
Way back from before the town was, yeah.
Well, that was just to sell the idea.
Well, I don't know.
So, let's start with Deripond, simply because I wrote Deripond down.
Yeah.
Um, and so I can keep my, uh, keep my notes somewhat, uh, logical and decipherable. Um, so Deripond, so you're saying it should be, um, a town beach?
Absolutely. It used to be.
And, you know, I mean, there is still something, but it just really needs a little bit of.
Well, because it has been cared for in the years that the town's older.
Well, have you, Stephen, have you been there lately in the last?
Yeah, it's mucky and messy and.
The water company is, in my opinion, drawing it down too much. They have.
Oh, well, that's a different story.
Well, it's, it's affecting the, the water flow there.
Right.
They are, they are under a limit and I don't know if anyone is monitoring it that well.
Okay. Is that one of the Hudson wells?
Kind of true.
Two, two, Hudson owns those two wells, Damien Duchesne.
Okay.
Plus, there's the issue of mill foil in the pond.
We treated the mill foil one time and, uh, probably needs to be done again.
Mill foil.
Oh, the mill foil, yeah.
And, and the issue of runoff from the houses that are unbelt around the pond?
Well, it does, it does get tested, um, during the summer.
Yeah.
Frequently. State will come down and test it. Kevin does also.
Okay, so let's talk about, so if we see.
Oh, the thirty-one, the ice skating.
The ice skating, okay. So, alright, so, so let's say C image thirty-one. Um, and so we were talking, you know, thirty-three, thirty-four, those gathering places, um, for the river. You know, are there other, do we think thirty-one?
Would thirty-nine be applicable with the town laws today?
Oops, that leaves little clues.
Sure.
I think at the north end of town, isn't there a site, Joan, that was donated by Sterling Colby Land there as a little park?
How far, what, you mean that?
Well, I think it's south of Corning Road.
Yeah, it's a, there's a ball field at one end.
Right. That land there, that's another site in town that has, possibly could be something. Size just a ball field. Um, the site across from here that was cut down for, um, playing fields.
Oh, I was saying that, huh.
That tract of land.
The, and, well, it was Mars Falls, I don't know if you would specifically put it, cause either there.
Yeah, no, that's another one.
Yeah.
So what about the, um,
the site, um, I forget, is it Brickyard Brook?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where they have that little kiosk, knowing there's a trail.
Three, I think three or three and a half acres there.
Yeah.
And that's town property.
Right.
But that's been pretty left, much left to sort of do its own thing.
It wa, it was, um, spiffed up by, um, the land came in and, and needs.
But you pretty much wanna leave it in a natural state, yeah.
More pristine, is that, does it have trails throughout it?
Yes.
Erosion's killing those trails, though.
Oh.
You gotta kind of cut up into the woods in some cases, cause the, the stream is just like cutting away at them pretty badly.
Okay.
One of the things that I don't see strangely enough in this section as much as I would have thought I would have is things like photographs of the, uh, ball fields which we're improving. Uh, photographs of recreational areas which are truly focused on recreation.
Okay.
Um, like the baseball diamonds or, or the football field at the high school, that sort of thing. Um, things that I've seen be successful in other communities is the attachment of those types of recreational leagues to larger open spaces for gatherings like picnic tables and that sort of thing around a baseball field in the outfield and a continuation of a grassy area where the kids can go plu, the younger kids can go play. While the older kids are playing in the ball field and that sort of thing.
Okay.
So mixed-use recreational activity areas.
Well, we have it in town, right? We have Deripond.
And it's very.
We just don't have a picture represented.
Right. So, I'm wondering to a certain degree, if I can just kind of, if I can test an assumption that the pictures that are in, that have been submitted are more illustrative of what additional things we want to see as opposed to the things that we already have. And we're good with that, we wanna keep that, such as the, the ball fields and the playgrounds. Um, you know, maybe, you know, if, if I can make an assumption on, on why I got so many images of one type as opposed to, you know, none of the other, is that I think everyone's like, we've got these, we love them, they're great, we're not worried about them.
But what about these ones?
Exactly. But this is something I'd like to see in addition to that, perhaps.
Well said.
Yeah.
Is that a safe assumption?
That's right.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, cause we certainly do not have, I would say, do not have enough river access at the moment. I would say we could get one tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay, so, so to whatever we produce for a document, we wanna make sure we, we include representation of the playgrounds and other rec facilities. But those are the, what we have, what we wanna keep, so.
If you don't mind, to the river access and.
Yep.
It's probably premature for me to ask, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. Merrimack, it sounds like they are doing something on their side.
They, yeah, they're going, yeah.
And if we, if the town here decides to do that, is that a regional impact potential? I don't know, I'm not, just asking.
Okay. No. Okay, are we good on recreation, river and open space? Alright, we are cruising.
Did you get the picnic table pictures?
Um, yeah, we kind of breezed through all of them and kind of talked about them all in a big, general conceptual, I do believe. Okay. Wildlife.
That was me. That was, uh, the question was what do we like, one of the things we liked about Litchfield, and I mentioned the wildlife that we have here.
About the turkeys. They're everywhere.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but they, they eat ticks. They do.
And you can't complain about that.
Oh, you can't.
And, you know, surprisingly, they're not as many as you'd think. A lot of these are the same flock. On the main road that you see crossing, whether it's down by Wilson Farm or up across from Griffin School, that's the same flock. It's about thirty of the minute and they're just go from one spark to another to feed.
And they live on the islands, uh, by our house. And have you, have you seen the turkeys fly?
Yeah, they're great.
They line up, cause we live right in the river, and they line up and they go one at a time over to the island. And the first time I saw them do it, I thought, oh, I didn't know that they could get off the ground.
They're great flyers.
I think we need more wildlife crossing signs since there's.
Okay.
Bordeer hit already.
That is something I want, I've been dying to ask and I, now that you mentioned it and dawned on me. There used to be one up here.
I had two on Albuquerque. Jack got them for me from the prison. One was stolen and we still have one, a little pack.
Cause I remember there was one and I haven't seen it.
I've never seen the deer cross before Pinecrest over here. I always see them pass Pinecrest where your deer crossing sign isn't, but.
At Hillcrest, Pinecrest, the, the field down there, that's a good place at dawn and dusk. And then I guess there's been a couple hit up on, uh, by April Drive on Albuquerque this year.
There's been, uh, several coming right out behind this building this year. I, uh, stopped in the middle of the road for like an eight point buck coming out of there recently. It's huge.
I was warned today to beware that there was a significant deer population right now.
Well, it's hunting, beginning of hunting season and they're, they know it.
Us in London Dairy have a good amount of deer on the road.
Hunting season too at this time of year.
Yeah.
That's, yes.
So they're all coming in.
It's smart, they hang around the houses during hunting season, I don't blame them.
Sick.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Been a doe with triplets in my neighborhood.
Aww.
Um, since last spring. She's pretty smart, she just stays in the neighborhood.
Do you live over by Jeff Lane?
Um, I live on Grove Court, but we've seen them a lot on Sentry and on Pearson. Um, I just saw them twice last week. They're still a, all A-OK. Two of the, the babies are quite large and the third one's a little runt, but still healthy. I don't know what'll happen when winter comes, but that, that was pretty amazing.
I'm on Albuquerque, a main road, and I saw three deer yesterday in my yard go across Albuquerque and I've seen foxes. So maybe we should look at the signs a little more. That's a main road in town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People need to slow down on Albuquerque. I don't know how we, uh, get a little more enforcement on Albuquerque.
I know we have a lot of coyotes too.
There are coy, let me get on my coyote spiel.
Okay.
There are coyotes in every town in New Hampshire.
Right.
Uh, we've been told more than once by this individual that's done a presentation, if you shoot one coyote, you're going to get more because that creates more food, so you'll get more coyotes. You might hear, I think you hear fifteen of them howling, but there, you're really not that many. And yes, I wouldn't wanna be in the woods and run into five, five or more, or four or more coyotes, but, you know, let's live and let live. It's my theory. I'm sure I'll get some flack about this.
Well, a, a farmer spoke with me this season and said, um, she hoped that, um, people wouldn't go down on her land and shoot the coyotes because they keep the woodchuck party, the shuckin' chuck. And the woodchucks decimate the crops.
But the, uh, all the coyotes on the property behind my house were shot.
Oh.
Uh, which is found by Wilson Farm. We had a family of them out there last year and so forth, they're all gone. And I know that they were shot. Cause I could hear the shooting.
Well, but there was trapping too.
Well, these were shot, cause I could see them chasing.
That, when they had the organic farm down at Nessencag, when there's crops, my husband used to work down there and the coyote would follow the tractor because the tractor would be pushing up the rodents. And they never had a problem with the coyote. They liked the coyote, like they caught all the varmints.
Hmm, that's a question, I don't know if you can, is there some kind of a, I mean, does Litchfield, can they not allow trapping?
It's a state, I think it's a state law.
Yeah, it's really the state.
And also, a lot of things are allowed on farms that are in other places.
That's true.
I just read a thing about trapping on, um, fishing games. I get email from fishing game and supposedly they're, um, a lot more humane than they were. My husky one time got caught in a leg trap and I have never heard anything so horrible. We got him out, but I ran from the river up through the organic farm. The Van Nies ladies thought I was crazy, but, I, cause I didn't think they could get him out, but they got the trap off him. And actually, we were not supposed to touch the trap, of course, my dog was stuck in it. Um, there was, there's all kinds of rules for the trappers and supposedly, you know, they are regulated by fishing games.
Well, they're supposed to check them every day, but my dog almost got caught in one too.
Hmm.
Um, and we called fishing game and they came and they looked at it. And there was an address on it, so it was like legal, but I'm like, but whose land was it on? We weren't sure. And I'm like, did they ever ask to put it there?
Yeah, probably.
I don't think so. For, and it was right off of a, a trail where people and dogs and children walk all the time.
This was in a, um, down by Brickyard where that goes into the river and they can come up into the river in a canoe and set the traps. And they, they were actually putting like a jelly mixture on, which of course attracts the dog. And, um.
Is that gonna be a problem with the river access site?
I don't think so, because I think that they have to, if they are on your property, and that doesn't have a stream coming up where we would be. The stream's between the two properties, um, I think they would have to have another pro, permission to do that.
You need written permission, you have to carry the written permission. Uh, trapping is only from January first to March thirty-first. And regular hunting, and that's for the, um, nighttime hunting too. And it's any time of year for, um, shooting them during the day.
So who put this in here?
The trap.
And what were, what were your thoughts around it?
One of the questions was what we liked about Mr. Field. And I imagine I'd like to go out there.
Okay. And in the community design chapter, how would that be reflected?
Well, I think it's tied, I'm sorry, no, please, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, again, I was just answering the question of what we liked about Litchfield.
I'm, I'm just trying to.
Well, I would like to keep it here and not drive it out with urbanization.
You wanna keep some of the forest?
Yeah, I think that's really where that goes to, is the.
So what the conservation commission's working toward too is preserving as much land, so the wildlife has a place to.
I understand, I'm just trying to thematically bring us back slowly and gently to the and the conversation around that. So.
I can, you know, let me help tie it, tie it then. Um, and I think what it comes back to is when we talk about the overall big picture design of our community, we're talking about balance. We're talking about a balance between built infrastructure and the green infrastructure, and how does, what does that balance look like? And so while the community cha- design chapter really does typically focus on the built infrastructure. You know, our, the buildings, the development that are, that happens, we wanna say that this is something that we wanna temper. As part of that design, we're looking for green spaces that preserve these, these key characteristics. And so, design should be done in a way, or site design should be done in a way that protects and maintains green space for wildlife. Because of the value.
And also improves the quality of life for human beings in the town as well.
It's a piece.
I have to excuse myself, but this has been a very interesting meeting. I think this is a good project.
Aggressive long, sorry I have to head out early. Keep rolling, okay. So, moving forward, so now the next series, starting with forty-two, and rolling through to forty-nine. Um, and I know that the batch of agriculture ones are, are all, probably also on, on three A, Charles Bancroft. Let's start with the historic pieces. Um, the, the historic buildings, and then we'll do the farms, um, if that works. So. Beyond saying these are, these are the sites that are, that are our community's history that we wanna preserve. We wanna go for, you know, are there specific things about these buildings that we want to talk about? One of the things, when I look at these and I, and I think about, um.
Steven left at the wrong time.
I know, I know, that's why I was like, oh, when he was going. Um, so, so when we look at the buildings, I think, when I look at it, I'm seeing, I'm seeing architectural pieces or historical architectural characteristics that we might wanna be calling out. Um, not for replication in the future, but for acknowledgement in future development. Future development that reflects on some of these historic, um, patterns or styles or features. Um, and so, that's, that is how, how I would look at some of these issue, images, but I wanted to give it to you.
Let the set backs from some of the larger structures. Um, I like the broken roof lines, not elongated roof lines. Number forty-five is kind of an exception to that. Um, but I think the original design of that building was probably substantially different than it probably exists today.
Actually, no.
No, same, same thing.
That, that's the, the original town hall.
Forty-two to.
What's it being used as now?
The Historical Society.
Historical Society. Forty-nine. Alright, so which one, sorry, which number was that?
Forty-five. Our original, our original town hall.
Yep.
Yes. With the original doors, still are.
Really?
Yes.
Wow. Yeah, that would be the, that would be what the roof foot line would have looked like historically, yeah.
That's a great revival.
Yep.
Design.
Yep.
Right, Ken?
Yes, it is.
I, I, I'd like to say a quick word about the, uh, fire station. Um, I don't think it's a particularly, um, attractive building. However, um, Steven, and it really is too bad as Heidi said, that he had to leave. Um, he's caring for his mother, so we need to understand that. Um, Steven's father spearheaded the building of this fire station, and it was a complete barn-raising kind of community effort. My father was on the building committee, and when I was at the fire station with Heidi, uh, getting permission to heat the craft fair tent, um, we were talking about the, that fact, or those facts, and, um, Doug, the fireperson, said, well, when we move up to the town hall, when that comes to fruition, you guys can have this building. Meaning the Historical Society, the church, et cetera. Um, in all seriousness, I think at some point that may provide more meeting space for the Historical Society, for the church. Um, and it's, it's a building that could be, continue to be well utilized.
And the facade could always be improved upon.
Yes. Sorry.
And that, I think, touches on something else too, and that is, um, preservation of maybe old barns in town. Um, I know there are a couple of structures in, on Route three A, I believe, um, that are old barns or, um, wooden structures, um, that may have a, um, historical impact or, you know. I don't know.
The house just south of the His- Historical Society, I have asthma, so forgive mine, I'm so kind of trembling here. Um, that was a family home of mine, and, uh, the barn behind that house is constructed in the old post and beam with the wooden pegs.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's real antique.
The one, the one just south of the school, that's the one that's pictured here in image fifty-two. That silo is tipping more every day.
Too far. Oh.
Fishing. It's gonna go, it's gonna go on one of these strong windy days.
A lot of barns have gone.
Yeah.
Too bad.
And that's something that, all across New Hampshire, is a big issue.
I know that the, the, um, I think it was the UNH Cooperative Extension many years ago did a publication about preserving old barns, uh, that came out.
Yes.
It was actually pretty good, it looked at different structures around the state, and what people were doing to, um, keep them, protect them, or, um, preserve them.
Well, the Preservation Alliance, um.
That's what I was gonna say.
In, of New Hampshire, just did a big project, fifty-two, fifty-two barns.
How did they do that many?
Yeah, they just did a big, big campaign to do, save fifty-two barns in the state. You know, I mean, uh, most of them are owned by private citizens now, and they need to apply. They need to apply for, uh, seven to save. If they can't handle it themselves, I don't, you know, these grants.
Well, I'll say that whole slide, slide of pictures you just showed of the town hall, the library, that whole area.
Yep.
You know, the, the discussion the town probably needs to have, and I'm gonna be very unpopular with saying it, is what's going to be considered the town center? Is it gonna be the oldest part of the town?
Would you like to say Historic District?
Or, I'm not saying anything about Historic District, that is not gonna happen in this town, I don't think. Or is it gonna be Albuquerque where the population is, that seems to be a discussion that's, has to happen. So far, the thing in the room has been the three A. And I'm not saying either way is wrong, but it, but people.
If that park idea took off though, that would be the perfect center of, of gathering space and, and center of town. You just have the library.
Old town center and new town center.
Well, you can, you can have.
Seriously.
You can have, you can have.
You can have two.
You can, you can have two.
You can, but that's just, I'm just saying, we have that discussion about.
You can have the municipal cen- the municipal government center.
Right.
You know, up here.
Original town center.
And then you can have the Historic Town Center. I mean, you can have the two, it creates some, some variety in town, different, gives you different things that you offer.
Good.
Um.
Well, it's along the lines of what you were saying a few minutes ago about Deripon and the recreational site that we already have.
Right.
Um, or, um, and I'm talking about the sports complex.
Right.
Um, the historic or older section of town, which is historic.
Okay.
For sure. And then, um, something perhaps here in the future. Fire station, town hall.
Yep.
If you have it over there. It's just like, you know, if it goes before the voters, they know that you can have two, is all I want, you know, it's not a zero-sum game, you know, that, that the town gets upset about.
About two or three opportunities for folks to gather in different settings.
We used to have a range hall that burned down in nineteen eighty-one, and that was a big gathering center forever.
Mm.
But London Dairy has two, I think, I think.
Range halls?
Steak and range.
If, they're one at the corner where the churches are.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know of any other one.
David, are you gonna move us gently along?
No, I'm gonna leave that to Jen.
Okay, anything else, else we wanna say about three A, Charles Bancroft, some of the, the particulars about the buildings? Um, are these, are there things here that you wanna say to folks, hey, when you design something in town, look at these lovely buildings? Um, be inspired, and then come to us, or, or say that's the past and we expect the future to be the future?
Library, I like.
What's the center, the sentiment?
I like, I mean, I like the look of the library, but the other buildings are, to me, regular building, looking buildings.
Yeah, because the library is.
Have you ever seen the stained glass windows in that church?
Yeah.
Actually, the church house looks nice too.
If you never have, you should step inside sometime.
They're over a hundred years old.
Today, the building contract is still, uh, deeply rooted in the colonial look of the homes, right? It's moving a little bit modern.
Mm-hmm.
But they still have that ingrained in most of the homes, uh, you know, other than maybe a split range, right? So, I think, you know, over time, you're seeing three hundred years, it's slowly moving, but it's keeping consistent, slowly. Morphing a little bit.
Yeah, one of, you know, different looking designs of the library, which I like the varied look. Um, I have other more to say on.
Alright, so let's do, make a note on the library there.
Most houses in this area still have that symmetrical look, right, the door in the middle, the, you know, the even number of windows, kind of, you know.
One of the notes I have along the three A experience is that there's a certain discontinuity of the experience of traveling three A. Um, you start out north end of town, you've got some residential, and you cruise in through. You pass a couple of golf courses, you pass mels. Um, there's some agricultural land through there, there's a certain discontinuity of experience if you're, uh, if you're doing something like thinking about agritourism, it's not necessarily a open invitation to that type of thing because there's such a discontinuity of the experience. Um, that's, that's, that can be viewed as a plus, and that can be viewed as a minus. Uh, but it's just, it's noteworthy.
Well, once you get past, uh, mels, going south, you do get that farm experience.
You do.
The farm stands and the fields of corn.
And, and it's broken up amongst residential and here and there a business or two. Um, agreed, and, and it is there to a certain extent. Understood.
Change.
It, it's just, it, it's, you know, a little, little here, a little there, a little there, and a little here. And, you know, i- if we're drafting a community design chapter, that may or may not have an influence about how you want to recommend that experience change or morph, or not change or not morph. So, I, I'm just noting it because I think that it's, it's interesting to me, I mean, I'm the new guy in town, right? Um, so, y- as you drive down, you see so many different things that is either really good or really bad, or maybe somewhere in between. But it's, it's just different, and if we want to go a d- go a particular direction with the town, noting that three A is the major corridor through town, that discontinuity of experiences, it's just different. It's not right, it's not wrong, it's just, you know, there's, there's no town center along there, I mean, you've got the Historical Society, you've got, uh, the schools, you've got the agriculture, it's, it's a varied experience, and it's not directed at, for example, agritourism. It's not directed at, um, preserving history, it's not directed at, um, a community experience, it's kind of here and there.
At least it's not Merrimack.
I'm, I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying it's bad, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it's bad. But it, it is something noteworthy that if we want to, if we want three A to become something, we have to note that three A is
It is something.
Is, is a, is a broken experience right now, it's not broken in the terms of it's shattered or anything, it's just, it's broken up.
And we don't want it to be broken up any more than it is.
Right.
Well, I, I don't know, and I think that that's, that's open to the design aspect of this, what is it we want to do with that? Do we want to rein in change and, and recommend that?
No, 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 in other areas of town, I think we should certainly be looking at the, uh, development of commercial possibilities. I'm just saying that on the Route three A stretch, and we owe a huge, uh, debt of gratitude to the Redonis family who sold their farmland to, um, the Wilson Farm instead of letting it, all those fields be turned into housing developments. So there has been some family effort to keep three A the way it is.
Except when you come into town from Hudson on the right-hand side, um, that has all been bought by a developer, so you need to have some vision on what you want there, because that's the gateway into Litchfield.
Good point.
And.
Joe, which, which parcel is that?
South of the Redonis farm stand.
Okay.
And my concern would be, I mean, speaking about future vi- future vision, is all of that agricultural land, of course, is at risk for us as a community if we don't.
Absolutely.
If we don't plan for the idea of what it is we want.
Absolutely.
Now, you know, my personal take on it is, agritourism, you know that. But the, but there may be other feelings in the room that say, okay, we should just continue going forward and let it grow naturally. Okay, well, I, I, but I wanna just point out that that's, that's the major corridor, and we should have a, a view about it as, as we design our community.
Nicely getting into our, our agriculture pictures here, which.
Notice how I artfully helped that along?
Perfect, yes, so our agriculture pictures go all the way to fifty-six.
At one time, we tried to get a, a larger setback on Route three A, and I don't think that even got to, uh, town meaning both. Did we call it?
We tried.
Try to get a hundred-foot setback.
Oh.
For like building homes?
Uh, anything, setback a hundred feet off of three A.
Was that part of the, um, the ag preservation piece we did, where we were looking at doing lot size averaging and setting aside some land?
Then they thought that the river was, in some places, so close that you went a hundred feet back.
Alright, so have we, in that, just, in that general conversation, have we talked about slides? Where did we start here, sorry? Give you all nausea as I click quickly, fifty through, you know, if I can do it down here without making you nauseous, fifty through, uh, fifty-six.
I think we could, we keep using the term agretainment, like a combination of agriculture and entertainment, and I get that, but I, I think the pictures I put up for some of the farms were to promote healthy living, that we know where our food is coming from. That's what we're trying to portray. At least that's what I was trying to portray.
Okay.
Not just entertainment, where I get, have to do the hayrides, or maybe the weddings, or whatever you wanna do on the property, well. But it was more to promote that we are for healthy living here.
The growing of.
Right. And I don't even say it's organic, but we are for, we're growing, we know where our food comes from.
Okay.
And I agree with agretainment as well, we need both, but I just don't want it just to fall under agretainment. And I agree with agretainment as well, we need both, but I just don't want it just to fall under agretainment. I agree, so feel free to-
Well, I was using agritourism. I was saying agritourism.
Sorry, sorry.
Um, agretainment, that's a new one for me.
I thought you said agretainment, I'm sorry.
But, you know, to that end, you know, the, the agritourism, you know, thing is, it's a way, it's, it's, you've got your farms, the farm remains the primary function, but then you add these secondary uses that help make the farm economically viable. Uh, make it so that it is something that is desirable, um, into the future. Um, and kinda helps maintain that use. Uh, and so, you know, to, you know, to a certain degree, you know, you take your, your blueberry picking, you're, you know, you pick your own berries. You know, that is a form of agritour- it's a way to get people on the farm, using the farm, engaging with the farm, um-
They can afford to keep the farm.
Exactly, a fun thing, you know, fun thing to go do on the weekend with your family, um, the hayrides. Um, but it can be larger, there are others that will, that are expanding. They're including an additional, um, structure on their site to conduct weddings or host events because it's, you know, becoming a more popular, um, venue. Or there in New England, you know?
I think, was it, um, I forget, but I think New Hampshire Products used to do something where they would bring in people who had farms and they produced, you know, vegetables or whatever, and then they would do some kind of like, um, farm dinner or something and invite people to the place to try the different foods and the wines and those types of things. So maybe something on that idea, right, I don't know, um, that's, you know. But I think it, I think it really focuses on pretty much people coming here to get the product. You know, they're coming here to get the blueberries, they're coming here to pick the strawberries, they're coming here to get, you know, for the pumpkins, for this or that. I think it's bringing that, you know, why are these people coming to Litchfield, why are they coming to Litchfield Farms?
You have two, two separate things there, you have people, agritourism, I read the blueberries and strawberries, but then questions has a whole nother set of people coming out of Boston to pick shell beans, eggplant, tomatoes, a whole Italian community and other, other ethnic groups to, it's amazing.
Which my mom started, by the way.
Good.
And now a cook.
Fantastic.
And, and Dave, you had mentioned in the past restaurants maybe with the produce from the farms.
That, that was what Orga- Nessun Gag Organic Farm used to sell directly to the farms. And one de- time, a few times, we'd have the chefs out of Boston come up and actually have meals at the farm.
Wow.
It was organic.
The interesting thing about this conversation to me is, um, we have no representation of any of the farms in the audience. And I feel like there's a community of farming here in Litchfield which is missing. So if you're out there and you're listening, come join us, um, and-
They're like, oh, I'm not a cook.
Well, I, I per- I personally went to a couple of the local farms and invited them to this, to join us in this process. And we haven't got that feedback, so join us if you're out there. Uh, but, but I think there's a community within the community that is missing that will help promote this. Um, as part of our experience in planning for this, um, we saw the Apple Hill, uh, case study, which, which directly references the importance of a, uh, community of farmers coming together in order to help serve the larger community and bring that economic interest to the community. Apple Hill, eh, I mean, you have no idea, it's probably a smaller geographic area than Litchfield. And if you can imagine during apple picking season, there are traffic jams for twenty miles to get to Apple Hill because people love going up to Apple Hill and experience, and they go from farm to farm and it's Christmas trees, it's apples, it's, and, and it's, it all started with a community of farmers. Um, but I think that there's a piece of that here in this discussion that I feel is lacking.
Well, if we can't, if we can't get the farmers, and that's been a consistent problem, maybe we could have outreach to U N H Cooperative Extension or the, um, Farm Bureau and see if we can get some help there.
There we go.
Jen, is that something that you could?
Deal with the farmers.
I'd be happy to work with you on that if you wanna have a conversation later in the week perhaps. That's a great idea, Jim. Sorry, that was my, uh, soapbox for tonight, I'm done.
And another per- another organization to contact would probably be the state, the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, Markets and Foods must have some programs that, you know, might be helpful to, that they're trying to promote.
And you're right, the past surveys, past three or four surveys, the top two things have been river access and agriculture out of the town. And we don't see them here. And that's what most of the town people say they want to have.
Alright.
Okay, from wildlife to the other wildlife.
We're almost there, so the last, the, the last batch-
For farmers.
I mean, for a long time. So the last batch are new community facilities. Um, and so we've got quite a few here, just kinda looking at some, um, civic, civic center type gathering spaces. And so these images here present a mix of the buildings themselves as well as the uses and what might, what might occur in each of the, you know, in a, a new community facility. So, so thinking, um, so one of the ideas was the combined fire, fire station, police station, ambulance, health stop, um, uh, you know, and so help support, you know, protected growth within the community. Another, it's a point here was senior center and or community center. Uh, and these types of facilities have, could potentially have kitchen available, uh, dining events that can be scheduled, um, group, group gatherings, and that could also become a prof- uh, professional, you know, attractive setting. So, you know, could be used for community events and that could be also rented out to help offset some costs for the town. Um, wellness activities, visiting health and services, group crafts, um, and have different, different gatherings, uh, and events, uh, youth events, uh, place for club meetings, charity drives, reading, education, uh, meeting rooms. My favorite, the indoor swimming pool. It's not my picture. Um, so, there we go.
Yeah, let's go to the fire station.
How?
To the fire station.
I know. Leave it there.
I mean, you certainly have the, the fifty-five and older communities, um-
That's for sure.
And I think, you know, you know, that's a conversation, I think, that maybe reaching out to them, seeing what maybe they might wanna see, I, I don't, I mean-
Yeah, the owners of those communities, if they want to do events, or whoever is like in charge of like the landlord, I guess.
I know, like, London Dairy has a senior center.
To do, we could easily get this place rented out, funding mostly.
What do you mean, to, 'cause each, each senior area has a-
Do each have their own?
Each have their own-
Community building, yeah.
Yeah.
So what do you think?
Oh, they already have their own community buildings?
Yeah, they do.
They're small, but they have them, each one has them, that was mandated by the-
Oh, wow.
I think that there's also a question of a, a gathering place for the larger community, which may be what you're pointing out, it may not be what you're pointing out, but, uh, I know I've seen that successfully developed in other communities as well where, um, you know, the community gets behind it, maybe there's some private funding, maybe there's public funding, maybe there's a shared cooperative that's developed in order to, to make it successful, uh, fundraisers and such. I've seen all of it in the community where, where that develops, that public-private partnership develops in order to, in order to push forward a senior center gathering place, which, and, and frankly, I've seen this, um, done really successfully in Nevada as an example, uh, where they pulled together a, a huge, uh, senior center, uh, almost with regional impact because it was so large in a very, very small town because it was such a, a tight partnership between the community and there was, uh, that public-private that worked out very, very well.
Thinking, uh, in, in a much smaller scale.
Can I just add one thing to that, the vision of that was we were an aging town, so that's why that was up there. May, we're gonna have to start to think of maybe some facilities. Sorry, Jen.
No, that's okay. Just, um, thinking on a smaller scale, you know, we're talking about the fire station maybe vacant and it being a, you mentioned it being a community gathering space or potential community gathering space. I mean, i- is there that potential to take and look at this building and come up with some way to do some adaptive reuse of the building to be a c- more of a community center? Um, it's not, it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, at the grandeur or scale of kind of having the commercial kitchen plus the, the big conference space plus the smaller meeting rooms. Um, but you might be able to get a s- a smaller version of this using that building.
Doesn't, doesn't the fire department have plans for it at this point if this new station goes through?
That's not my impression.
Okay.
You'll know December fifth.
That's a good question to ask when the, so the fire department is gonna be here on December fifth to present the plans for the new, the new fire station. Yes, the new proposal, so.
Somebody commented, it looks like a nice restaurant, too, Firehouse Restaurant or something.
Fire, farm-to-table Firehouse Station, I don't know.
It would have a theme, a strong theme, you know, that's what brings people in, branding.
And for an extra twenty bucks, we'll put in a, a poll. Um, to kinda go back to the community design chapter element, I like, for these types of buildings, I like the idea of thematically, uh, speaking, sticking to, uh, the, the northeastern styles, uh, that we've all actually already discussed. The exterior look and feels which are similar to, uh, maybe smaller buildings which we would see, maybe homes which we would see, but thematically trying to stick to that, that idea, that concept in, in larger community buildings. Uh, I like that, I also know and understand that there's a lot of, uh, more modern requirements to the building codes for community buildings which we have to, uh, we have to accept which might change that slightly, but if we're, if we're talking about look and feels, uh, I like the New England style houses. So applying that type of architectural elements to a, uh, larger community building would be something that I'd be in favor of.
The only thing that your, your modern building codes really interfere with in terms of replicating a historic kind of design are stairs. Your rise overrun, that's the biggest thing. The other, the one thing that really does impact it is budget. Everyone goes for smaller windows and fewer windows or cheaper windows or any, anything, anything like that, those are, those are the things that you're gonna have that are gonna interfere with or, or not kind of live up to that historic pattern or, or scale. From a material standpoint, you're also less likely to see wood, but you can get, you know, if you stay away from pure vinyl siding, um, you can get kind of knockoff simulated materials that are gonna be a little bit better, um, so you can, you can use some modern materials and have still a good feel. I'm sure I would be crucified in some communities for saying some of that, but.
Um, something that we touched on earlier as it, uh, related to solar in some of the early pictures last week, we haven't reached back to in this examination this week, and I said week, but I mean the last time we met.
Yes. Solar.
Is solar something that we wanna consider encouraging in our, uh, design chapter?
I would definitely see this as something that would be a good visual preference survey question and have, you know, different examples of solar installations, um, so the rooftop, the side yard, the, you know, try and find some different examples of how solar can be deployed and float it out there to see, see what, what kind of the visual tolerance is.
I like it.
Okay, so, alright, so while we're there, let's do, let's do a kind of a quick, quick brainstorm of if we were to do a visual preference survey, what, what do we wanna put on that? So, solar signs was another one that we talked about tonight. Um, what are some other things that we would wanna put on there to get more kind of a-
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Okay, the river, right, the river, the park. You talking about that or you still talking about homes?
Um, anything in general where, where w- we can't point to a picture and say it should look exactly like that. You know, so, so setbacks is a good one to mention, so let's, let's zip to some of the commercials. We looked at some commercial that was like right up on the street. Um, we loo- you know, another one right up on the street, we looked at other commercial that is setback and has different parking around it, we had even further setback and I don't wanna, you know, these ones got a little contentious last month. Um, you know, so we look, you know, so setbacks, it's, it's, you know, how far is that building from, from the street? So that would be a good, that's definitely a good thing to put out there where we can show different examples of, of what different setbacks might look like and get a feel. Um, the challenge with that one will be to get people looking at the setback and not the building. That will be the magic trick. So we'll have to get buildings that are all equally attractive or similar or something, I don't know. We can do it, though, we can do anything.
The other thing that we've discussed in terms of both, um, uh, residential and commercial was the look and feel of the New England style. And I was wondering if that's something that we wanna add to the visual surveys. Um, you know, a residential component that's in keeping versus something that might not be, uh, quite so much versus something that looks like something you'd find in, I don't know, pick a s- pick a, pick a modern city, Singapore. Uh, uh, for, for both residential and commercial, just to kinda see where people sit for that visual survey.
Okay, so something that has a range-
I think I know what we're gonna find, but-
So something that has a range of images that, that start with a v- with more of a vernacular and kind of grady, you know, step towards, um, a modern contemporary style, okay. And do that for residential and commercial.
It's supposed to be in the woods, remember, behind the trees, that those big modern ones were supposed to be in the commercial zones.
Yes, yeah.
Hidden behind the trees, now if they just see that by itself on a piece of paper, they're gonna freak out. But that wasn't the intent, but that was-
Right, but the interesting thing was, is if you ta- if you take that design and you turn that building, same size, same shape, same size, and you turn it into a New England style huge building?
I don't think you can do that with one of these.
Well, perhaps, perhaps not, I'd leave that to the architects, but I bet you there's one somewhere.
See, that was in the woods, not, can you go back one more, Jen? The intent was to be hidden, but still bring in the tax dollars.
Yes.
That, I, I mean, you can show that building out in the open and then you can show it surrounded by the trees. In the commercial districts, not Route three A and the farms.
Kim, you scared a lot of people with that.
I did scare a lot of people.
I think we should definitely put a picture of a Walmart installation.
Okay, same. Alright, so, staying focused. Alright, so we have a few things, so, um, I know it's, it's, you know, it's eight, eight forty, um, what I would like to propose is that, um, let me just- Um, what I would like to propose is that, um, let me escape from here, so go back to what's posted online, so if you go to today's, um, I did not print, but it is at least posted. We've taken kind of the conversation thus far, and this is just, this is a shell. Um, but trying to start compiling what, what it all looks like, and so that first, the very first evening, um, you know, took that, the conversation, boiled it down to a really succinct introduction. Um, and then just some bullets on, uh, that related to the images that we looked at at the first meeting, and I'll do similar, uh, or the second meeting, excuse me, I'll do similar for the items that we talked about tonight, some bullets. Um, I think the next step is, is I'll start taking some of the images that you've collected and start pairing them up with some of these things that we've talked about so that it really truly is uh sa- you know, pairing an image with a policy statement um or a goal. Um, so that's, that's kind of a next step. Uh, the other next step that I'd like to t- kinda take, and at least start, and then maybe we can play with um at a future meeting, is um trying to tie some of the images and these statements to place-based um locations in town. So take Dara Pond and say, okay, we've got this location, we, here are some images that we see of how we visualize this. For three A, this is how we see it, and I think for three A, it might be interesting to take um and do something, and I think, was it you who has all the pictures of three A that already? Or someone has pictures?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, so one of the things that might be fun is to do, to do something that kind of walks, walks the reader down three A and kinda do some little pinpoints of different images of what that experience is as you're driving down three A. It might not include every site on three A, but put some highlights. Um, and we can do a existing, and then we can do a fut- you know, future vision, and, and if there are other things that we wanna see on three A or s- you know, take that fire station and see it redone, what would that look like, what would that be, and, and kind of pair some of those things. So that's kind of where I'd like to, to start moving with this. Um, and so I think for the next meeting, I'm gonna start playing, I'm gonna get as far as I can with that. Um, so just kind of taking up today's notes, summarizing it, and then starting to pair images with these statements and um s- some of these place-based notions that we've talked about. Um, and then I'll have a draft of a visual preference survey uh that we can look at and tear apart a little bit, and then um when you're comfortable with that, we can launch that and try and get it out um and get as many responses as we can to a visual preference piece. Uh, I'll probably put more into the visual preference survey than you may want initially in the draft, just to give you some food for thought. Um, and you can chuck it, and that's okay. Um, it won't be the pretty shiny version, it'll be a, you know, plunk it, plunk it into Word so we can at least have a conversation, 'cause that ultimately what we'll do is we'll take what we want and pull it all into Survey Monkey and have it online, um, so that takes a little bit more, more time to do. So that is kind of where I see some of the next steps in moving, moving this forward into something um a little bit more tangible. Thank you for bearing with the kind of nebulous conversation. It's, you know, a lot of it is to educate me um in terms of what, what is important and what you see is important um and what we should be including, and it gives me um a good foundation to start, start compiling and putting pieces together. And if I'm correct, there is not a subcommittee meeting in December?
That is correct, we have a um, a review.
A continuation.
Continuation of a site plan, so the next one would be January. And uh, don't be frightened by my calendar. There's like the house calendar and everything that I'm broadcasting for all the world, so let's, let's just take that nightmare off. I wonder why I'm looking a little crazy and hairy and he just saw why.
No meeting in December.
Um, so Jen, you have a planning board meeting in December. Don't have a design, a, a community design subcommittee meeting.
I didn't want that running out, thinking they had.
Yeah. So it would be um.
January sixteenth?
Oh yeah, I'm looking, yes, uh, yes, January sixteenth. Yes, indeed, January sixteenth.
So you would want all those pictures scanned and on a computer?
Let's, don't scan them yet, or, or let's, let's start with what we have, or maybe pick somewhere between five and ten.
For all of Route three A?
No, just to start. I'm, I'm initially thinking of what I can actually fit on an eleven by, on an eight and a half by eleven page if I do the entire length and line some pictures up on left and right. So I think we start with a few and then we ask, what do we need to add? And I also have quite a few that are already from the PowerPoint here. So this would be additional.
Question, are we gonna have a meeting on the second of January?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I don't know.
What does the board feel about that?
Honestly, I'm not able to make this sound telephonically or otherwise.
Well, it is pretty close to.
January sixteenth.
New Year's, obviously, that is the day before. Uh, would anyone object not having a meeting on the second?
I think that's a possibly a wise decision not, not to have a meeting on the second.
I'll be at work all day.
When is deliberative session, is that in January? Do we need any?
No, usually deliberative sessions are in February.
So I would say you should wait to decide what to do with January second until after your hearing on December fifth. If everything goes through swimmingly, then you don't need a second hearing. If your demolition review ordinance, I don't think your accessory dwelling unit amendment is gonna have any comments. Um, but if your demolition review thing needs a second hearing and a second opportunity for the public to comment, it's gonna be January second.
So.
Wait till December fifth, see how your hearing goes, and then make a call on January second.
I am not gonna be here too late on December fifth because it is my birthday. So I'll be here for a brief period of time.
Listen, buddy, I was here on my kid's birthday. Sorry.
Okay.
I think you took an oath, buddy.
What if there's no forum and you're the forum maker?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Email me and we'll kind of touch base and figure out like how many.
Let me look at the calendar.
I, I don't wanna torture you with like
That's not what you said the other day.
Kim helps me with that technically, so. Okay.
Yeah, the fifth.
Okay.
Yeah, I just put them on CD and prop them, you know, kinda thing. She brings them in. She brings them to me and I prop them.
These photographs.
I will be here possibly for a brief period of time.
Okay.
So we go to Staples.
Would you trust us with um, so I, we have a good scanner in our office, would you trust us with them to, like, from one meeting to the next? So like if Kim brought them in on the fifth, we'd return them, December fifth, we'd return them to you on the nineteenth? Nineteenth, yes. Would you? Would you trust him to let me take them back to my office?
Because we would just go to Staples anyway.
Cause we've got a good, we've got, like, you don't have to go and pay at Staples to do it.
It's up to you, can she keep?
We're getting there.
I could burn you a CD and everything. And do it that way.
Alright, well you guys can have a discussion, I'll just let me know if you need.
You guys don't follow Robert's rules, do you?
Yes, December fifth, next week.
Oh, you don't have your next meeting?
Okay.
I'll be here for probably a short amount of time and then.
At least December fifth.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, December fifth. So if it goes too much.
He's still young, he celebrates his birthday.
The favorites.
I, they all are, I grew up on Route three A.
Alright.
I did it cause um I did a calendar project with my art school.
So the next step for bids on the person is right, Mr. Churn?
Yes.
Whatever happened to the library pictures that we dedicated to, that were hanging in the library?
The unit designated keeper moving her along?
Yes. Alright, well, we're gonna continue along with the meeting, I'm sorry. Thank you, everybody, we're on the subcommittee who uh contributed tonight.
No, I don't think so.
Um, second order of business. I'm sorry, oh, okay, we were drunk. Second order of business, election of planning board officers. Um, as you know, I um kind of delayed this to the last meeting, but um we're going to need a new chair, vice chair, and clerk. So, uh with that said, is anyone interested in being chair of the planning board?
I would like to nominate you.
Go ahead.
We had talked about with Steve Perry here last time, a potential dual chairmanship was an option.
It is an option.
Just to let everybody know that, that might have been an offline conversation when you left, after you dropped off the phone. So I don't know if it is legal in Litchfield to do that or not with the, for the selectmen members to know that, can you have a dual?
We have done it in the past.
Are you talking about co-chair?
Yeah, like a co-chair.
We've done that.
You have done that in the past? The only reason I bring it up is, we had joked with Tom before about a mock meeting, in the, in the situation we were in that, you know, um chairman, vice chairman, and secretary weren't there, and unfortunately, it didn't happen, and now we're in the situation we're in that the only reason I'm bringing it up is if you had a dual chairmanship, somebody would already be ready to take over if something should happen like this again.
Would it be, would it be a chair and a vice chair?
Well, the vice chair is technically the person that would fill in.
Wouldn't be a dual chair, it would just be a chair and a vice chair, that would be acceptable.
From a formatting perspective, is it the same net?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Jen, do you know?
I'm reading your bylaws.
So you're cheating.
No, I'm doing my research.
Doing her due diligence.
I was bringing it, she's finding information.
So um in the meantime, should we sing the Litchfield fight song while?
We'll shut off the television.
It just says you shall, you shall vote annually on the following officers. Um, the term shall be limited to a year, however, you're eligible for reelection. Um, I would say since we're, it's a, it's a midterm reshuffling, you would still, your annual meeting is that first meeting after town meeting in March. Um, so you will still be doing.
Another one in March?
Yes, a redo in March. Um, so your list of officers are your chair, uh, who shall preside at all meetings and hearings of the board and shall have the duties normally conferred on such officers. The chair shall appoint such committees as directed by the board and shall also designate who shall act as chair of such committees. As directed by the board, the chair may affix his/her signature in the name of the board, um, duh 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 duh, can't be an ex officio. Uh, vice chair, the vice chair shall act for the chair in his/her absence and have the authority to perform the duties prescribed for that office. This position shall not be held by an ex officio member. Secretary clerk, it shall be a responsibility of the secretary clerk to maintain uh the records of the board with the assistance of staff as may be available. Um, prepare the agenda for the regular and special meetings, again, with staff. Um, this is, this is a lot of the things that since you have staff, that the clerk is off the hook on. Um, in the absence of, oh, in the absence of the secretary, the chair or the vice chair shall be responsible for records of meetings. The secretary slash clerk shall act as the chair pro tem in the absence or inability to serve of the chair and the vice chair. So you've got the chair, you got the vice chair as backup, and you got the clerk as the backup.
President VP and speaker of the host.
Exactly. So, with that said, what would this board like to do? Is anyone interested, well, let's, let me put it out there first, is anyone interested in the chair position?
Not a. Um, can I take a step backwards?
You can take a step backwards, forwards, sideways.
Tell you what. Draw out some nominations, you can nominate more than one person. We'll go to, we'll use my scrap paper. And you can each write down your vote for chair, vice chair, and clerk. And you can send them back, and you can have multiple people for consideration for multiple things.
We're gonna do a secret ballot?
If you want to.
Anyone have any objection?
If you have, if you have multiple nominations, are multiple people interested, why not? I'll do it just in case.
Well, the last time we did it.
You're allowed to request a written.
The last time we did it, we uh, we did it openly. Is, are there any objections to just doing it openly?
Go for it.
Just a suggestion, if you wanna do it openly, we can do it openly.
Mike nominate you for chair.
Second.
Alright, wait a minute, I have a motion.
I didn't hear that.
I have, you wanna make a motion?
I'm making, wait, what is my motion, to nominate you for chair? Alright, I make a motion to nominate Mike Carr for chair.
Alright, I have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Oh, the eyes have it.
Beautiful, easy peasy.
It's a nomination, not a, you said nominate, right? Is it, it's a nomination. Is there anyone else that is interested in, or would, you would like to nominate as chair? You have to open it up and allow for multiple people if there's multiple people.
But you, you just had four, four ayes and I assume an abstention.
That's okay.
Not voting for yourself.
About the process.
Oh, okay, my bad, I'm sorry, Robert's rules.
Vote carries, why are we discussing this further?
Did you vote for yourself?
You could vote for yourself, why would you abstain?
No, I did, I did.
So, Kurt, did you vote?
I'll say I did, yes.
Okay, five, zero, one.
Alright, so that takes care of the chair.
Okay.
Alright, now I need a motion for vice chair. Who would like to be the vice chair?
I'd nominate Kim.
Yep, I'd second that motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Is there others who would wanna be nominated? Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Easy peasy.
Motion passes.
Five, zero, one.
Five, zero, one, okay. Alright, and now finally, the clerk, uh clerk of works or the secretary? Do I have someone who would like to be the clerk of works or secretary to the planning board? I have a nomination.
Okay, I'll do it.
You're sure?
I nominate Mr. Blanchett.
Alright, I have a motion to nominate Mr. Blanchett, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, uh, discussion, and is there anyone who else who wants to be nominated? Make sure that we, okay, second discussion. All those in favor of Mr. Blanchett as the new clerk class secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain.
Motion passes five, zero, one. So I guess that completes the election planning board officers. Congratulations to all the new. Committee reports, are there any reports from any of the committees would like to speak? Nobody, okay. Uh, approval of November seventh, two thousand seventeen minutes? As you all had a chance to look at that.
I was at it earlier, I don't remember.
Any changes, questions? I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
No, he's entertaining the motion.
Oh, you're entertaining the motion, I'm sorry.
Are you making that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the November seventh, two thousand seventeen minutes of the planning board as written, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second discussion. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes five, zero, one. What's next? Because I just lost my place, I'm sorry.
Any other business?
Any other business, thank you.
Yes, I have one item. Jen, do you mind staying an extra five minutes to review what I talked about while I was on? It was about the heritage commission for the Board of Selectmen that we're meeting on Monday.
Oh, you're meeting on Monday, okay, good. Very good.
Just to have a review of those things.
Joan, is there anything that we need to, anything else that needs to be?
No, December fifth, we have the hearing on the changes, site plan, zoning, and presentation by the engineering company or architectural company for the fire station.
Okay.
Any chance we can keep those materials a little bit more in advance? I assume that most of them are already fully developed.
Which, the fire station?
Yeah.
They're already posted to tonight's Google page.
To tonight's Google page?
Yeah.
I'm on tonight's Google page, I don't see them.
It's under agenda items, it says fire station.
Thank you. Did you just put that up?
It was like at five, five thirty?
Yeah, because I looked at it this morning, it wasn't there, so.
I just got them this afternoon.
I don't feel bad asking, Jen.
I got them from the engineer and within an hour they were posted.
Very nice.
I believe.
Very, yeah.
Is there any other business for the board this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion? Guess not. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion passes six, zero, zero. Thank you, everyone, for watching, and we'll see you on December.